Okay, hello, my name is student Dr. Jennifer Adelman. Thank you for joining us today. I'm thrilled to welcome Russ Dunning to speak to us this afternoon. Russ is an accomplished sports physical therapist, strength coach, and researcher with Kine Performance Physical Therapy. Russ comes from a background as a martial artist and strength athlete. After his academic years, which include a Masters of Science in biomedical engineering and physical therapy, he pursued becoming a strong first kettlebell instructor to complement his sports physical therapy focus. As an academic, he is published and active in research. As a PT, he is deeply involved in his patients' successes and as a coach, he leads groups of both young and professional athletes to better their total body performance, strength, and conditioning. Russ is the sports medicine coach for the UFC Hall of Fame, Uriah Faber, and Team Alpha Male out of Sacramento. Russ and I have known each other for the past eight years now, and he was actually my physical therapist when I was an injured athlete in high school. Today, we will be discussing how the healthcare team, including doctors, physical therapists, coaches, and more, can work together to help athletes get from pain to performance. This is an interactive session, so please feel free to raise your hand on the Zoom room or send in a chat if you have a question or would like to participate in some way, and I'll try to moderate and make sure your questions are answered by the end. Thank you and please welcome Russ Dunning.
All right, gang. What can hear me? Thumbs up? You all good? Yeah, I think in our, in our medical age, everyone becomes better when they understand the roles that we all have in a patient's life and a person's life. And those roles are varied from massage therapist, chiro PT, to strength coach, fitness coach, sport coach, to GP specialist, injection-based doc, and then, you know, if they get sick and diseased, then, you know, you have your rheumatologist, nephrologist, oncologist, you know. So the list goes on in medicine. And I think depending on where you're at and where the many of your patients fall on that spectrum, it's just so healthy to understand the roles that people have in a patient's life. So today, we're going to dive into what physical therapy is. And it's a, it's super variable experience depending on, really frankly, who you see. But I'm gonna try and give you our best method of what we think physical therapy and physical rehabilitation should be. So we're gonna bring in some big concepts. I'll share with you some big concepts right from the beginning. And then we're gonna use those concepts to dive into a case. So even though most of you are fairly young and healthy and probably don't have much disease happening in your body, I will, I do want purse to be an example. We're gonna dive into you and I'm gonna do full evaluation on you in real time. And if no one wants to be that guinea pig, then I'm gonna pick on Jenny 10 years ago. She's gonna reenact what her 15-year-old body was going through with the lead softball at the time. So, so I'm prepared to do that. I don't want to though, because I love, I love when it's real. And then you get to see the real thought process, the real thought process of what goes behind understanding tissue healing movement mechanics and stuff that we do in our realm. So I'm going to share my screen.
If needed, for if you need a case, I can definitely volunteer one.
Perfect, Peyton. Glad you signed up. I'm gonna use you in about two minutes. Sounds good. All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Y'all can share the screen, correct? Y'all can see it? Okay, so this is just our company website, and we have quite a few things here. But I want to first portray this pyramid. So we call this, we have, we do it this way as well. But what I love about this graphic version, we share this with all of our patients and trying to understand what physical therapy is all about. So we talk about the human pyramid with respect to the foundation layer, which we call the live layer, then the movement layer, which is this middle ground, and then the top layer, the perform layer. So a lot of us come to us, say, say Peyton is a soccer athlete and she has a knee injury and she's saying, she's gonna ask me like, well, you know, should I be, should I be taking any kind of supplements for my upcoming game? I'm really working with my sport coach and I were working on this, this little aspect to my training so that I can do this big tournament that I have coming up. And I'm gonna tell that athlete, that person, say, well, you're really asking me about this top layer performance. Let's first go through this whole process and let's see what the base layer looks like. Because this base layer has a massive multiplier. It's kind of nonsensical to talk about tapering performance when we don't have proper sleep habits, when we don't have a proper recovery habits. And maybe you've had too much psychological stress or your attitude sucks. If we've got some major fundamental things going on, then really talking about the little details is quite silly. In PT realm, we do a lot in the movement layer. So think of the live layer as your fundamentals to your lifestyle that implement good thing and thriving with your tissue health. The movement layer is, you know, maybe related to everything from hamstring flexibility to hip interrotation to your training history, what type of strength training are you doing? And do you do yoga on the weekends? You know, that kind of thing is in this movement layer. And then the perform layer has a lot to do with your training schedule and how fast you, how powerful you, what's your advanced nutrition? What kind of skill sets are you working on? So we utilize this human pyramid to discuss the big, the big lifestyle factors, movement factors, and performance factors that all help us find purpose in life. So that's one big concept that we'll, we'll drive home and we'll talk about that, you know, every time with people asking, you know, how well, how good is your sleep? What's your heart rate like? Stuff like that. And then, um, let's see if I can move this. I wanna move it. How do I move it? There we go. And then we'll go into a little bit. Where is my? See Jenny? You caught me. Okay, so we're gonna do a joint-by-joint approach. So when I analyze Peyton, I'm gonna try and have an understanding of how well does her joint system move? Now, because Peyton's sitting in a car, I'm gonna ask her just to be honest on what she can do here. Maybe she can get outside and actually show us what she's, how she's moving. But when we look at the joint-by-joint approach, we're gonna notice that there's gonna be some tendencies with the body. The ankle needs to move in all planes. Last I checked, earth was not perfectly flat everywhere you go. There's not still to this day asphalt and concrete everywhere. So because the earth is constantly undulating and changing, we need an ankle that can move around the earth's positions. If it doesn't move, guess what's on threat? You start injuring a knee, which is really frankly only moving in one plane. So we think of the ankle complex as having more mobility dysfunctions. We think of the knee complex as having instability dysfunctions such as acil tears, meniscus tears in the leg. And we go up the chain to the hip. The hip tends to get a bit stiff. So that stiffness can grossly affect the joints above and below. So that, that hip IR deficit definitely has an effect on people's low back, also has an effect on people's knees. So we think of these mobility deficits, both in the ankle and in the hip, as having contributing factors to the instability injuries at the knee and the low back. Because again, we've got the lower back and all it is is just stacked vertebral columns without much structural support in terms of how much bone there is. But we do have a lot of soft tissue support. So you have all of the transverse abdominis, paraspinals, oblique, and abdominis rectus tissue that help give us that quote-unquote core stability. And if we have dysfunctions above and below, and we have poor dynamic stabilizing tissue through the trunk itself, we get those instability injuries such as your disc protrusions and disc tears and even like your facet issues that are really all come from excessive movement when we don't want it moving. Okay, go up the chain to thrust spine. The thrust spine tends to get stiff in a kyphotic nature because we all live in kyphosis as we're studying and reading and driving. And, and that's where we kind of see that T-spine dysfunction for most people, which can of course contribute to again, low back stress and neck and shoulders. So the gross point of this joint-by-joint approach, each joint stacking on itself, major joint complex, had its, has a tendency to either getting stiff or becoming more unstable. Stiffness tendency, instability tendency, stiffness tendency, instability tendency, stiffness, and then instability. So when we look at that, when Peyton's gonna talk about her knee pain, I'm immediately gonna look very carefully at how her ankle's moving and how her hip is moving to see if we have any contributing factors to what is causing her issues here. Whether we label it patellofemoral issues, T-bend issues, meniscus issues, plica issues, on a gross point, I could almost care less, truly. You guys know this, when you get an MRI of a 60-year-old, how many positive findings are you gonna get of a 60-year-old ex-athlete? Do you light them up with an MRI? You're gonna find all these positive correlations to old injuries, old trauma degeneration. But the person may or may not be in pain. They may have issues, may not. So have to zoom out and say, well, what's the threat level? First and foremost. So we're gonna look, we're gonna think about that joint-by-joint approach there. And then we're gonna interlay that on what's the connective tissue like? So we'll think about it from a fascial line standpoint, but you know, gross point looking on the human body, we have your anterior line on the far left, your posterior line in the second part, your lateral line on the third guy. Then you have your functional patterns, both in the front and the back, and then you have your deep core line. So these big fascial influences have a huge impact to the joint stresses and movement stresses dysfunctions that people live with every day. And I'll, I'll usually take, take the point home, this connective tissue is far stronger. Holy hell. Can you guys still hear me? Because the music is literally blasting right now.
We can still hear you.
It became a rave in this in a hot second. All right, we're back to normalcy. I don't have to yell. So these fascial lines are insanely powerful. Don't think of this because it's quote-unquote soft tissue. It's easy to change or it doesn't have that much pull on your body. So the word we use in, in the anatomy world is we call it tensegrity. We have body integrity because of tension. And the only structure is really forming tension consistently throughout the whole body is our connective tissue glove around us. So our tensegrity is defined by a squeeze together. If that squeeze has some imbalances, it creates a lot of functional disturbances, joint pathology, instability pathology, or just good old-fashioned pain syndromes. So it's important to look at the fascial lines as well, and that gives us a big viewpoint of how do the joints move? How's a fascial line move? And we do that with the thanks of what we call the SFMA. So the SFMA, that's not the movement, that's not the movement. So this is a quick selective functional movement assessment of the body. So let's see if you guys can, can roll with me here. We're gonna look at how well does the C-spine flex, extend, and rotate? And we qualify that with movement. We will grade it either dysfunctional, painful, or non-painful, or functional, painful, non-painful. Functional meaning, is it within the range of acceptance? Or is it not looking good? And it may be a contributor to what's going on. So for every, every single person, whether they have an ankle sprain or herniated disc, we're gonna do this head to toe. How well does the neck move? Then we'll look at the upper extremity. How well does it interior-rotate, extend, up, basically scap-touch? They'll try and touch the scapula from behind their, their back, and then they'll attempt to touch the scapula from behind their head. So those gross patterns with, with both upper extremities. And now look at both the neck, the upper extremity. Then we'll look at the multi-segmental movements. We'll look at multi-segmental flexion, toe touch. Then we'll look at multi-segmental extension, backwards bend. And then look at a multi-segmental rotation, right and left. And then again, we're just kind of looking at a top-tier perspective. Are you able to do it functionally or not? And if you can't do it functionally, I'm going to put you on the table and put you in various positions to find out exactly this function that contributes to your top-tier dysfunction, if that makes sense. The last two tests would be a single-leg stance test for 10 seconds, eyes closed. And then how well can you squat? Now, we call that our top-tier testing. These are all top-tier patterns, okay? And if they can't, so if you can't move your shoulder in that particular pattern, I'm gonna look at how do you look prone? How do you look at 90/90? How well does the shoulder extend? How well does the elbow move? So I will tease out that top-tier pattern with sometimes three tests, sometimes seven tests to find out the exact dysfunction of why. For instance, for all of you who can't touch your toes, we will look at, can you do it with one leg bent? Can you do it in sitting? Can you lie on your back and raise one leg straight to 70 degrees? Can I move it and can you get to 80 degrees? Can you sit back on your hips in child's pose? Can you flip on your back and hug your knee to your chest? And then can you do a rolling pattern? I will look at those and then I'll tell you, you can't touch your toes because of this movement. And with that particular test, I will retest that in two weeks after you do your homework to make sure, hey, are we getting better with this movement? The only people that can't get better with their movement are the ones that are near death. Every single person can get better with their movement, whether they believe it or not. Regardless, the human body is meant to adapt. So we help everyone who does their homework. And this is how we assess every one of our top-tier patterns. And what I'm gonna do with Peyton, hopefully she can get her car here in a second, and we're gonna do this for her with her injury. So we look at the selective functional movement assessment to identify dysfunctions. We look at the human pyramid to look at lifestyle dysfunctions and lifestyle factors. This is mostly sleep, psych, stress, nutrition, recovery, and maybe relevant history, congenital stuff, DNA stuff, or old injuries and relevant history. So we look at lifestyle, we look at movement, and then we grade the dysfunction. And from there, we implement the right kind of manual therapy and exercise. And we go along this continuum from motion to strength, to speed, to power, to performance. When we're in motion, we'll also talk about conditioning. How good's the stability tissue conditioning? How good is your systemic tissue conditioning? Conditioning, you could think of as my natural density, or just think of what's your capacity to doing work? So we can, we can kind of term that a little different ways. We're looking, how well can the tissue handle work? And then we, we go along this continuum with a series of drills. So the motion sector might be a lot of movement resets, groundwork, mobility work, stability holds. The strength would be on the typical strength patterns of push-pull, squat, hinge, carry-support, and rotate, anti-rotate. And then we develop our more fun stuff that we do with our more athletic population with speed and power. So this is how I'm going to progress Peyton, and we give low-level exercise and we slow advance it over the next many weeks. So that's kind of a top tier of what PT is all about. Now let's dive into back to you here. It's, how do I do this? Stop, share. Okay, so now I need a I need Peyton. We're gonna do a quick PT session on Peyton, so you guys can see this in real time.
I apologize. I have my practical like right after one, so I had to be ready.
Okay, either we still use Peyton, we see someone that we can see them move. Are we still gonna use Peyton?
I can get out if you need.
Just do that. I just need you to get out so we can see your movement.
Okay.
How about this? Hold on first. Tell me, tell me your, tell me your issue. I gotta write down a few things.
Oh, boy. Um, do you want a little bit of a backstory with it? I mean, there's a lot that's wrong with me.
You have, you have three minutes. Tell me as much backstory.
I played D1 college soccer. I, uh, my freshman year, I fractured both sesmoids in my left foot. They didn't believe me. I wore, then finally, eight months later, they realized they were broken, but they were already healed separately. They couldn't fix it. They told me that the only way to fix it then was to have surgery because the one started having necrosis, my fibular sesmoid. I wore a boot for a year and a half and played a whole season with it broken still, and then had a fibular sesmoedectomy, a first metatarsal osteotomy. And while they were there, I had lateral collateral ankle reconstruction because it was pretty much not, it had a giant hole in it. So they fixed that. I tore my MCL.
Go, the ankle reconstruction.
Yes.
You dive into a quick detail of that.
Um, I was had, I have really like just, I've had bad ankles my entire life, always was rolling them. They think that partially the reason that I'm prone to ankle is because of how my foot is shaped. So they think that like from rolling it so many times that I started to pronate in and put more pressure on my sesmoids. But so while he was there.
What did they reconstruct?
Um, he like took, he pretty much found it like withholding two strands together, and he sewed it, the middle of it back up as much as he could, and then he cut it and then he pulled it even tighter. So it's, so he like took it and then he just, and then he like shortened it.
All the lateral compartment, medial compartment?
Lateral.
Is that the only area that he reconstructed is the lateral compartment?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Keep going.
Um, well, and then they put screws in my foot and they started coming out the top of my foot about four or five months after. So then I had another surgery, but they were, my bone is healed enough. I had another surgery to remove those. But I've had, and then I had, I had torn my, my MCL. I tore that in high school.
Was that before or after the ankle reconstruction?
That was before. It was my right knee, but it's been my left foot and ankle. And then since like a year ago, I did something to my right foot.
So you tore your right MCL, and then years later, your left foot started really getting issues in your left ankle. So the left foot and left ankle came after the right knee?
The left ankle was always the right knee happened. The left, left foot came afterwards and was, was an overuse injury.
Because your right knee wasn't fully rehabilitated?
Maybe. Also, I played on Bermuda grass, is the grass that we had, and it's very soft. And so because it's so soft, they said that your foot works like extra to like be pressing down. And we had three days and stuff like that. So it was just like a lot of.
Was your MCL tear, how significant was that? Was it fully ruptured, partial?
It was almost completely ruptured. It was held together, as he said, but he's never, they've never seen one like that before because it was like so close.
Was that, that was your first significant injury on your body, though?
Oh, no. We go another year before that one. I actually had another thing they've never seen before. I had a bone contusion underneath my MCL, or yeah, I had a bone contusion underneath my MCL where everything in my knee stretched. So my ACL was super lax, LCL, ECL, everything was really lax, but didn't actually break, but they've never seen it.
Was that your right knee?
It was my right knee.
Okay, so you had a right knee at a very young age. You had a right knee injury. A year later, you had another right knee injury, and then two years later, left foot, left ankle reconstruction.
Yeah.
So if we measured your thighs right now, is your right thigh smaller than your left? Has anyone ever measured?
Um, yeah, I mean, they did most of the time. I did, they did the, I forget the name, Bmat, the, you know, I'm talking about. It's like the thing that you push like really hard, like against. We had to do that like three times a year. My scores are actually really good. My hamstrings are not, are actually really strong compared to most of my like teammates. They were the same size. They were pretty close in size. Um, I think the, it was after my surgery that things all went haywire.
The left ankle?
Yeah, after the surgeries, that's when my thighs were a little different.
So what hurts now?
Um, my left foot still, of course, has pain for the rest of my life. I was told I'd be a normal human being. Um, I get, I have right knee pain. If like, if I go on a run, I cannot, I can't as much. I play soccer still, not smart, but you know.
All right, gang. So Peyton's is very typical. We have a super relevant history, but otherwise young and healthy. So we need to see what we can do to help her. Right, gang? Everyone's gonna help me, all 20 of you? All right, so now Peyton, I need your phone set up so I can see you move.
Okay.
And you, and you gotta be able to hear me. So put it on speaker. And all right, perfect.
That better?
Yeah. Okay, all right. I can somewhat see, so this is gonna be a little challenge. All right.
Get a little bit closer. Is that better?
Let's do that, because I need to see you squat and I need to see you in half kneeling.
Let me see if I can get something or reason.
Okay, so we're gonna, quick idea, gang, of how she moves with top-tier testing. And then we're gonna go into the special dysfunctions. And then we're gonna talk about our game plan moving forward with her. Perfect, Peyton. All right. Okay, feet together. Okay, take your chin all the way down to your chest. Good. Take your chin, the sky as high as you can. Look all the way up. Come on back. Look all the way to the left. Tuck your chin, collarbone. Good. Look to your right. Chin to collarbone. When I see a person do very well there, I'm looking at a person that can, that should be able to move really well throughout their whole body. If I see cervical tension, even though I'm like looking into someone's like knee and hips, and I see them really kind of piss-poor with that movement, they might have kind of global tightness. So I'm kind of just judging her just with those few top tiers. I'm gonna skip the shoulder stuff for now because we have so much bigger fish to fry. But it's important to like look at top tier for that reason. Okay, Peyton, knee straight, touch your toes. Come on up. Okay, with that angle, that looks pretty darn decent. Go ahead and put your arms overhead, bend backwards as far as you can. Good. Come on back. Okay, I look pretty good, extension. Keeping your feet together, I want you to look all the way behind you to get a rotate your body. Feet together, rotate everything you got. Try and look behind you. She has great rotation through her body. Switch. I can't see the ankles, but I'm just kind of guessing, looking at her hips and shoulders that she's rotating quite a bit. All right, I want you to scoot back like 15 steps without getting injured. Careful. All right, I can barely see your feet, but I want to see, stand on one leg.
This be better.
Yeah. There you go. Uh, step back, one more big spot, one more big step. Okay, stand on one leg. Eyes closed. That's pretty good. Switch sides. Eyes open first, left. Eyes closed. Rest. I think Peyton did a lot of therapy, that's for sure. Okay, open up your stance. I want to see a deep squat.
Okay, hold on. All right, I'm on a hill.
Okay, I want you to face to your right. Do a deep, to your right. Is that your right? There you go. There you go. Now step that way further. Get further away from me. Go further. There you go. Okay, deep squat again. Come on up. Does that hurt? Okay, go, put your feet all the way together. Do it again. Right now, we're judging how good our dorsiflexion is, gang. And it looked pretty good to me. So again, face that way. Face, uh-huh, and now feet together, do a deep squat. Slowly come up. Good, face me, feet together, do a deep squat. Go slow. Come on up. Is that hard?
No.
Is it painful?
I do it a lot. Um, no.
This isn't fair. You do a lot of therapy. That's really not fair. Okay, so let's get a little bit more detailed into it. So I gotta take a look at full plantarflexion and then dorsiflexion. So I want you to turn around, walk on your heels, 10 paces. Only heel walking, 10 paces. Okay, come on back, only on your toes, 10 paces. Do those feel normal left to right? Any issue?
Um, that's, that's hard for me. It's painful on my left for, I can't like plant when I, it's hard for me to plant.
To plant arx?
Yeah.
Yeah. And when you do carrefaces on your own, does it hurt?
Um, yes.
Every time? The same?
Um, no. When I get fatigued, it's worse for sure.
Where it hurts, point. Let me see your foot, point.
It hurts like right where my sesmoid used to be.
Well.
But like, and like kind of more in as well. It's kind of like, and then it like radiates through my foot. But I just have no, I have no ability to like push off very well. Causes pain.
Okay, so we gotta look at your big toe flexibility. Have you, this is a little tough. We're getting deep into into movement here on a camera, which is a little hard. We gotta look at your big toe. So, so right now, can you take your big toe to 90 degrees of, like passively, grab your own toe? Can you pull it all the way up so it's vertical? Do you get there?
No.
You need to look at left to right. Tell me difference. So do your left foot and then do your right foot, and we're just gonna have to pretend like the office, because Pete, virtual PT isn't a thing. I'm not sure if you guys knew that. Virtual PT doesn't exist. We can chat all we like about it, and we can have like a little. Slightly less?
Yes.
Has anyone ever manipulated your plantar fascia to stretch that scarred area? Has anyone ever manipulated your plantar fascia to stretch that scarred area? How many times have they done that?
Um, I used to do it almost every day.
Okay, did they use tools?
Yes.
Did it get better when they were doing it?
Yes.
And then it got worse when you didn't do it as much?
Yes.
Okay. Remind me again, how many years ago that, that was worked on?
Um, originally it was worked on, uh, six, twenty like sixteen.
Okay.
And then it's, I mean, it was worked on until twenty eighteen regularly, twenty nineteen at home, my trainers and PT do it as well, but I do it to myself now.
Okay, do you ever put a ball, like a lacrosse ball on your plantar fascia and kind of move your toes back and forth every day? You do that?
Do it very often. Um, I even sometimes do my least favorite exercise called towel scrunches where I literally take a towel and I grab the towel and I drag it or marble pickups, like where you like literally pick it up with a marble.
You've done a lot of work. So has anyone cup on your bottom of your foot? Put a cup, you pulled on it. Okay.
It's one of my favorite.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, gang. So she, of course Peyton would pick her, pick herself, cause this is kind of a tough case with how intense her history is. But this is where, uh, really we do a lot of tissue therapy. Um, in terms of, we'll use either a, a blade tool, a scraping tool. We use a cupping tool, pull up on it. Um, we can use a floss band and kind of wrap the tissue and compress it really tight. And then after manual therapy, we'll work on the drills that cause the most pain such as like down dog positions, uh, lunge positions, push the sled, trying to open up that scar because with your fractures and necrosis, definitely necrosis is a big one. So when that tissue dies and gets replaced, it gets replaced with pretty thick, adhesed fibrous scars. So our options are to continue with manual therapy and, and push like sleds to gain that flexibility and will that tissue to change? Or we start getting some needles involved. Do PRP injections, hyaluronic acid injections, uh, shoot prolotherapy, prolozone, shoot some oxygen in it, put sugar water, put something in it. So we do a lot of different injections for this type of issue. Uh, I also have some really advanced clients that will, um, will do a lot of uh, dry needling in that area and they'll, uh, combine that with, um, with hyperbaric chamber stuff. So we can get pretty fancy on fibrotic area in the plantar fascias depending on how far down the rabbit hole Peyton wants to go. But she's young and healthy. So that means this tissue will not stay like this forever. I've never seen anyone that, that doesn't change. So the tissue will change. You put a lot of therapy already on this foot. But we speak mostly to, to this idea of cellular turnover. So skin, all right, I'm gonna do a little question in the group and just unmike yourself if you, if you know the answer. How quickly does skin regenerate in the dermal layer? Shoot, how many days? Okay, you get, how many?
Twelve.
Twelve, close. Yeah, yeah. Right? Yeah, close. Yeah, ten, eleven, twelve days. Right? So if you get a zipper in your knee, i.e. a knee replacement, uh, how soon does a surgeon let you go back into the spa? Like eleven, eleven, after ten days, they take the staples out. On the eleventh or twelfth day, you're in the spa. So dermal layers can, can heal up pretty fast. Think of like a stomach ulcer after someone uses a lot of ibuprofen. How long do they not stop using ibuprofen? How quickly is that GI gut? Uh, you know, rehabilitate, how quickly those cells turn over? It's a dermal layer. It's the dermis. So it's, it's the endothelial cells about like ten, fourteen days. All right, next question. Muscles, muscle tissue, how quickly does it turn over? NFL, if they've got a mid quad strain, how many weeks does the NFL say if that wide receiver is out, that running back is out?
Two weeks.
Yeah, you know, so you got the super adapters. The super adapters can be definitely two, three weeks. Um, the regular adapter is more like the four to six weeks. So I'd say anywhere from two to six weeks, we kind of ballpark it a month for the, uh, the myosin actin, uh, cells to turn over, a whole new life to them, right? Okay, so Peyton is you. How long does it take for collagen to turn over, deep in the tendon and ligament in the fascia? Peyton, what do you think?
Um, well, I know, well, I don't like ligament wise, it's like a little over three to six months. I think it's like six months to over a year.
Yeah, so the, the science is kind of in that, like anywhere from six months to eighteen months. So super slow turnover. The, now, not the collagen isoforms in bone, those osteoclast osteoblasts are more like on the six to eight week timeframe. But when you're in more of the thick of the tendon, the thick of the fascia, uh, much more like avascular zones, it's super slow turnover. So when we try and stimulate a response at fascia, ligament, uh, connective tissue, really thick tendon, it's a slow process. Uh, especially when it comes to sensitivity. But we focus on dysfunction, not on pain, because dysfunction we're in charge of. So with Peyton, I'm gonna focus on how well does that big toe move? Her ankle dorsiflexion looked spot on, her single leg stance proprioception looked really good. And her full body moves really nicely. So the thing to obsess about really is that big toe and that's what implements a lot of the stress at the sesmoid area. So we would probably continue with manual therapy or really entertain some interesting injections to help facilitate healing. So I, I regularly have people do a PRP injection for this exact issue uh, to help stimulate a response. And then we restart therapy of stressing the tissue. And then again, climb uphill, walk backwards, do a sled push sled pull, do some calf raises, try and stress the system. Just as long as the recovery, the, the live factor in the pyramid is good. We got good nutrition, good supplements, you know, not an overinflamed lifestyle. If you're a smoker doing drugs, we have no business talking like this. But if you're a healthy person and you've got exercise on your side and got aerobic health on your side, then we work much more aggressively at how the tissue moves to invoke a change.
Yeah, I should have, I probably could have mentioned, um, that like, I, you can't see it of course here. Um, I do have like a hitch in my step because like I don't do, um, I like can't plantar flex at the end of like your toe off. And so instead I roll and then I just like lift my foot up and that's, so like you can see it. My teammates used to say that it looked like I was running with a stick up my butt, cause I would like, like kind of hiking it like.
And that's, that's a tough one, gang. So whenever we have footage, it does affect gait mechanics. And if you run really fast or do a lot of white, walking, your hip is doing something different. It's not going through normal extension as it's supposed to be. You're kind of stopping the motion short. So you're more likely to have some psoas tension on that side, which can definitely adversely affect your lower back. And, uh, and it makes you just compensate all the way through. So we don't wanna give up. You're not someone to give up on, even though you've tried really, really hard. Uh, I'm definitely gonna send you to, uh, to the doc down the street that it puts a nice little PRP injection in that and we restart again. And, uh, whenever we have thick collagenous changes from trauma, definitely necrosis, infection be another big one. When we have those super physiological, uh, pathologies that adversely affect the last tissue of a tissue, then really patients get to know me for years. But I've seen change over years' time, not months' time, because of the concept of cellular turnover at this, at this level. Uh, but we don't wanna give up on it because we don't want your, uh, your knee, hip and back getting, having issues. So gang, that's what PT is. Now you saw me assess, you didn't see me, um, um, actually do stuff, but we talked about it. So we do breakout tools, PTs these days, we don't use the hands too much. These are our babies. You know, we, we, we like them for eating and cooking and handling babies, not necessarily for patient cares. So I don't use as much of my hands as I used to. We use tools. Uh, and then our tool interaction needs to be appropriate. So each person's a little bit different on the tissue stress that they can endure. Uh, but, uh, we do a lot of manual therapy. We do a lot of exercise and we progress along the way that I just shared with you. And that is as best reels I can tell you of what this PT trade is all about. And, um, occasionally I have doctors that'll tell patients they don't believe in PT. And I tell my patients in a very kind way, say it's like saying that a hammer doesn't work. Of course the hammer works. You just gotta use it appropriately. So to say exercise doesn't work is kind of silly. So I'd hope all you guys become practitioners that believe in the right service for your patients. And that means that you have to vet out the people that you believe in, vet out your network. The orthos and PMNR guys and injection girls and the, uh, the sports medicine docs in our area, they, they know us because of relationships built and they know what we do because they ask and they care. And that's how the relationship is formed. It has nothing to do with, um, aligning yourself with business. It has everything to do with aligning yourself with the right care. And so we spend a lot of time educating, uh, all practitioners. This is what we're doing with patients. Let me know if you think otherwise or if you have any input or what you see, so that we can truly act like a team. So when you become practitioners, embrace team mentality, because no one wants to be, uh, to attempt to be some, you know, super person in this, in this world and be the, the, the be all, end all for, for the patient. I'm your only guru. I'm your only person that says something. It doesn't work like that and patients don't do well with that. They, they do well with, uh, with the, with, with teamwork. And, uh, my teammates are just as much surgeons and sports med docs and injection docs, as well as general physicians and then strength coaches, massage therapists, chiros and sport coaches. That's the greater network. And, um, if you guys enter into that realm with your, uh, with your clinical degrees, I am excited for you to harness that network and vet out the people you believe in and do good care. So any, any questions on that?
I wanted to make a quick comment as well. Um, Russ and the other practitioners at Kine Performance PT have a lot of in-person courses coming up this year. Um, and we actually have a discount code. So please, uh, you can contact me. I'll send my email in the chat. Um, but please consider signing up for their, their classes. They're, they're teaching, one of the classes is bridging the gap and you can learn a little bit more about bridging the gap between medicine, PT and all of the practitioners that Russ just mentioned. So I think coming to one of their courses would be a really helpful resource. Um, if you're interested in learning more about Russ, what Russ is talking about.
If you guys ever wanna shadow, uh, me, I've had doctors in the past, just kind of hang out and shadow, because they wanted to get a real life, an idea of, of the PT trade. Um, you're more than welcome to hang out with any one of us for a day. That, uh, be happy to have you and any insights you might have. But other than that, I'm a pretty open book. You guys are just down the street from me. So, uh, don't be a stranger.
Can I send your email in the chat, Russ?
Absolutely. Share it. You're very welcome. Cool, gang. Thanks Jenny for having me.
Yeah, yeah, of course. I know everyone has to kind of get to their one o'clock things, but, um, I wanted to kind of ask if you could briefly talk about with Peyton's example, how we're talking a little, a little bit about plantar fascia and about how that plantar fascia would impact up the chain using the fascial lines that you talked about before.
Yes, so we, we tell people the fascial line is just the extension of the posterior line. So think of the hamstring, calf and plantar fascia as one muscle rather than all different tissues. Think of it as one tissue. So when you touch your toes in your active straight leg raises forty-five degrees and your plantar fascia hurts, we have a posterior line problem. A lot of times people have posterior line issues with chronic plantar fascia. They also might have stability issues. So if the midfoot's folding in, so we'll see knee valgus collapse, we will see, um, external rotation, uh, strength off in the hip. Uh, we'll see poor hip extension in the glute and that will all be, uh, that will all facilitate a midfoot over pronate position. And you might see that as like a toe out during gait, um, but a loss of, a loss of midfoot stability because of up the chain issues can also lead to chronic plantar fascia. So we'll either see it through the spiral aligned stability pattern or the posterior line, uh, fascial line, uh, tension. Uh, so we can have tension dysfunctions and instability dysfunctions that kind of give us both, uh, plantar fascia pain, tendon pain, heel pain, Seaver's disease, the likes. And, uh, it's important for us to label things as dysfunctions because then the activity becomes, uh, be, becomes supported. If I, if I give you, uh, if they give you a diagnosis of plantar fascia and then you Google plantar fascia, you don't really find solutions. You find attempts, you might find a shotgun approach, but you don't really find solutions. Or if I say you have an active straight leg raise of forty-five degrees, you do have posterior line tightness dysfunction. Now it's like, well, what do we do? We need to improve that. And then I give you active straight leg raise patterns. I give you flossing patterns. I give you T holds and hinge patterns. And then you see how I'm just giving you homework to address the dysfunction. So we tend not to, uh, talk about people's diagnosis in terms of what tissue hurts. Like I really don't say IT band syndrome all that much. I don't say patellofemoral syndrome too much. I say your knee hurts because of this. And I label it dysfunction. So, uh, that's how we talk about with people so that they understand their dysfunctions contribute to their pain pattern. So plantar fascia is usually midfoot instability because of valgus collapse or, uh, uh, which valgus collapse would be a hip stability dysfunction or it's posterior line tightness. So that's just an example of kind of how, how we look at it, but it's important that we label things correctly because then the, uh, the solution is like readily apparent when you think of it like that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I had something quick. Uh, thank you, Russ, for, uh, talking to us today. Um, I was just, I, I know that you have some experience with like UFC athletes and and combat sports athletes. I'm just kind of wondering as to like how you got plugged into that and just kind of like your story on that. Or, uh, one day I wanna work primarily with combat sports athletes. I think that'd be awesome. So just kind of tell me about like how that happened.
Yeah, li- like a lot of things, uh, opportunity presents itself when you're ready and if you stay attentive. And, uh, so for my end, I was, um, in my middle twenties, just graduated. I was a martial artist my whole life and then my first martial artist as a patient, I hit a home run with. I helped that martial artist get back to a high level. That martial artist had a buddy and he sent his buddy over and I did really well with that person. And that person's buddy then had another buddy and they were on Uriah's team. And then once I got connected with Uriah, so Uriah had a big fight about ten years ago where he broke his hand, dislocated his thumb, couldn't use his hands. And, uh, he's like, Russ, I was told to come to you because you can help me get back. And, um, I did well with him and I, once I, you know, it was almost like two people led me to an influencer. And once I did well with the influencer, then I did well with the whole team. And so to kind of get in with it, you just, uh, you do good work and keep your ears to the ground and, um, stay ready. But I was always kind of willing to help them. So as soon as I saw my first few MMA athletes, then I just told myself, I told the, I told Uriah, hey, I'll just come out to your gym once a week and assess injuries. And if they need therapy, then I'll bring them back to the clinic. So I just did kind of above and beyond, uh, to help out with the team, more or less, um, like more or less pro bono. It was like quite a few years of just free help. And then once I became trusted, uh, then all the UFC guys just used me after every UFC fight. So, um, you know, I think a lot of like elite level athletics and elite level sports, it's, uh, you have to find a way of developing trust. So the answer to your question is, how do I establish trust? That's with great work and being ready to help. And, and then I was given the opportunity and.
Yeah. And, and I guess your, your personal experience too probably helped you click with them and probably you guys spark it off.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I, yeah, I'm not shy on, on delivering pain. Like I, I'm, I've been through a lot in my life and, um, uh, for people who are ready, I help them go through a fair amount of pain to get pain free. It's kind of a really odd scenario, but usually, uh, the shirt that I always joke about, that would be my slogan is, um, is the good hurt. This is the good pain.
Yeah.
And, and the hurt so good phrase is very common, uh, for the people I help out with because their tissue adhesions are fairly pronounced like Peyton's. And for a lot of these fighters, they have a lot of fortified tissue from years of combat. So we can't just do soft little tricks. They don't really work with really fortified bodies. Kind of have to hit them at their level. So if you're used to trying this hard with your body, you need a stimulus in the PT realm that's kind of similar to that intensity level. Uh, if you kind of hit him with these cute little PT exercises, nothing really ever changes. I've got a bear, I've got a bare knuckle fighter fighting this weekend. His name's Chad Mendez. He's the most
Oh shit.
fighter I've ever dealt with. He's like a bowling ball, like a brick house.
Yeah, he used to be in the UFC, right?
Yep, yep. So he retired from the UFC because he just makes more money in bare knuckle. But, uh, but if I can, I do like a cute little exercise and some soft therapy on him, he just looks at me like, Russ, that didn't do shit. You gotta try a lot harder than that. So, so the, I, I speak their language and I, I, I like it. It's, it's fun. Um, but I'll help my grandmas too and I help my little kids. Uh, I, you know, I'll see cerebral palsy with a C four quadriplegic and I'll, I'll see my seventy-five year old arthritis. And then when I get my fighter, I kind of turn it on and I just bring the intensity to them.
That's amazing. Yeah, I'd definitely love to come by and see, uh, your, your clinic sometime. That's amazing. Yeah, I'd definitely love to come by and see, uh, your, your clinic sometime.
Right, right here in East, you know, you guys let Jenny know or directly contact me and you guys are welcome anytime. Just let me know. I just only can have one of you at a time, but it's a pretty fun environment.
It's awesome. All right, thanks, Russ.
Yep. All right, gang.
Any other questions?
All right, I, I'd love to ask a question if you have
Sure, go for it, go for it.
Okay, so when you're trying to reestablish a new healthy pattern, like a movement pattern in a patient, um, how much emphasis are you putting on, on manual work during the visit as related to like, yeah, the homework you give, et cetera?
Yeah, so our evals, we spend an hour on the evals, because we have to hear someone's story. And we have to make sure that we engage with them from a really an empathetic, active listening standpoint, so that, that's how trust is determined. So we have to really be attentive and we, we need to let that story play out, which takes a fair amount of time. Uh, once we kind of get through that, say twenty or twenty-five minutes of, of story time and, and assessment, we usually will spend anywhere from like ten to twenty minutes with tissue resets, and then another ten to fifteen minutes of exercise. All subsequent sessions after that are usually between like the thirty and forty-five minute realm. And, um, and usually it feels like half and half, like half tissue work, half exercise work. Uh, there comes a point where tissue work has diminishing returns for most of us. So in the beginning, it's pretty uh, magical in how the body opens. And then as it opens better and better and better, it just has less returns. As someone like Peyton, she's already had a lot of work done. So the returns would be very little with someone who's already done a lot of tissue work. But if they've never done, if they've never had their hip mobilized, then after they have it once, they're gonna be like a lot better on how well they're able to move. But if they're older and they have, say, some more habits that, that encourage that tension, then it might only last for a few hours or a few days or a week or two, and then they kind of want it again. The younger you are, the more that tissue work has a, a longer lasting effect. So if I, if I manipulate a kid, I might only need to do it once, and then they do their homework and they're, they're improved. They're good. Uh, for my sixty-year-old, oh, I do it once a week for a whole year. So the tissue work is really dependent on age and how much history that tissue has. And, uh, but it usually feels like anywhere from like ten to twenty minutes of tissue work. And then we do exercise for anywhere from like ten minutes to sixty minutes. It depends on how much the person's able to tolerate.
Okay. Um, awesome. And when you say tissue resets, can you help me understand like what that means?
Yeah, so the old way of thinking, which isn't that old, maybe like, for some people, they still think like this. But the old way of thinking is that we're mechanically deforming tissue, and that's why it works. In reality, we're mechanically deforming tissue to stimulate the brain. So the better the brain can uh, understand that stimulus, then the better the effect. So think of it more like a neurosensory stimulus rather than mechanical. It's a mechanical stimulus that creates a neurosensory effect. I'm not actually stretching tendon and it's staying. I'm not stretching fascia and staying. I'm just stimulating it. So when we say reset, it's trying to reset a bad habit. So if you try and touch your toes and you can only touch your shins, and then we do some therapy. And then you're able to touch toes after we're done. Just think of it like I helped kind of reset your nervous system. Your nervous system was, was had this bad habit of having a shortened posterior line. And after therapy, you have an improved posterior line. So we kind of reset it. All right, this is how the body's supposed to work. Now, we do exercise to support that reset. A lot of people need a lot of resets, depending on how this, you know, chronically dysfunctional their life is. If you sit like you're doing right now all day long, you need a lot of tissue resets.
Got it.
If you're lightly mobile all day long, then you might, the recess might not be as, as, uh, as needed daily. So, uh, we, we call them tissue resets, because it's like pushing reset on the sensory, the neurosensory system.
Got it. Okay, it's like
Reverse this. I need some mechanically open up your hamstring, and now it's gonna stay there, because I did really good ART.
Okay.
So when people ask like, well, should I do ART? Should I do acupuncture? Should I do acupressure? Should I use a foam roll? Should I use a ball? Should the ball have a spike on it? I jokingly say, it doesn't matter at all. I don't care what you do. You could, you could take like a little hallucinogen and that would have the same reset.
So like the nervous system might be like firing into one muscle like way too much and not firing into another, and you're like, kind of trying to change that pattern. Okay.
That's why, that's why it doesn't matter on how you reset. It just matters that you reset it. And some people respond better to certain resets than others. So usually I, I try a few different ones and they say like, oh, I really liked that one. That one really had a big impact on me. Okay, cool. We'll roll with that. I don't have my favorite resets. My favorite reset's the one that you like the best.
Awesome, thank you.
And I also like the ones that you can do to yourself. So I teach everyone how to floss or how to do a little cup or how to do some acupressure. Um, the more tangible it is to, for you to do every day, if you need every day, then it's real. You know, I don't, I don't try and teach dependency that someone needs me for the rest of their life. They just need to do the right things for their body, and that we discovered together.
Okay.
Cool. Cool.
Russ, thank you so much for your time. That was a fantastic talk, and I think we've all learned something from it. Um, and thank you everyone for coming as well, uh, taking time out of your day. So, thank you so much.
Okay, see ya. Bye.